Call to order. Commission meeting for the City of Dickinson for September 21, 2021. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Winningham, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Mr. President and Commissioners, there will be one change, and we'll be listing that as Item 7 under Planning, under Tab A. Once the Internet synchronizes here, you should see from our Director of Planning, you'll see Riverfront Estates addition. And that'll be for a vote for final plan. And I'll work to get that, your OneNote updated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions for Mr. Winningham on the amended Order of Business? I'd look for a motion on the amended Order of Business.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the amended Order of Business by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor of the amended Order of Business state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that the Commission wishes to discuss? I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Very none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. First item up this evening, we have a resolution and a proclamation for the consideration of the Commission. First item up is Resolution 27-2021. This resolution is proclaiming October 13, 2021, as Manufacturing Day in Dickinson, whereas the City of Dickinson has a strong history as a community supporting manufacturing in the approximately 1,400 stable, sustained jobs that manufacturers provide. And whereas, manufacturing is a cornerstone of innovation in our economy, and manufacturing firms fund most domestic corporate research and development, and the resulting innovations in productivity, growth, improvement of our standards of living. And whereas, manufacturing also drives United States exports and is crucial for strong national defense. And whereas, many opportunities exist for Dickinson area residents to utilize their skills and talents in manufacturing in order to improve their lives and those of their loved ones. And whereas, manufacturing diversifies the local economy, thereby bringing sustainability to the community. And whereas, manufacturing is a significant creator of new wealth by means of sales outside of our area and outside of our state. And whereas, over 1,200 North Dakota companies provide excellent careers in manufacturing for over 26,000 people and are adding new jobs every day. Now therefore, I, Scott Decker, President and the Board of the City Commissioners of the City of Dickinson, do hereby proclaim October 13, 2021, as Manufacturing Day in Dickinson, and encourage all citizens to consider the positive impact of modern manufacturing on their lives and its contribution to the success of Dickinson, Stark County, North Dakota, and the United States of America. And I would have a motion for this resolution.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Now we have a proclamation. That proclamation is an Arbor Day proclamation. The City of Dickinson, North Dakota, proclamation Arbor Day to all to whom these presents shall come greetings, whereas our city's trees have been a gift to us from generations past, whose foresight and concern for the future motivated them to plant shade trees for our benefit. And whereas, we must use this time, we have to plant new trees so that the future generations will be able to reap the benefits of shade, beauty, and environmental advantages which we so greatly enjoy. And now therefore, I, President of the City Commission of the City of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim October 7, 2021, as Arbor Day in the City of Dickinson, North Dakota. I call upon the public-spirited and foresighted citizens of our city to plant trees now for the present and future beauty and enjoyment for all of our residents, in witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused a seal to be affixed. And I will look for a motion on this proclamation.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walla to approve. Second by Commissioner Otterman. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Maury, we will have our monthly financial report.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. So we'll start off with our treasures report as of the end of August of 2021. So our net working cash, we're down about 1.9 million compared to the end of July. So just a small decrease there. You can see we're at 12.4 for unassigned cash. Again, a lot of revenue comes in earlier in the year, so we expect to see that go down to about 7.5 million by the end of, the end of 2021. And then moving on to our investments, again, no major changes in our investments since the last time I presented. We're still right around that $40 million mark. You'll see some small, some small increases in interest earned and items like that, but most of our, our major contributions in these trust funds come out at the beginning of And then moving on to our 1% sales tax. So with a three-year comparison, the blue line is 2019, the red line is 2020, and then we have a dark, a dark brown line that is 2021. So you can see in August, the, the blue line for 2019 was quite a bit higher. I'm not specifically sure what the reason for that is, but in August of '21 compared to 2019, we're down about 197,000, which is a 46% decrease. Through the first eight months total from '21 compared to 2019, we're down a total of 313,000, which is about a 7.5% decrease. And then this slide here, you can see we always add for the public just to show that we collect our sales tax into separate funds. And then moving on to our hospitality tax. So again, the blue line is 2019, red line is 2020, and then the dark brown line is 21. You can see 21 is, is down a little bit compared to prior years. August 21 was down about 18,000 compared to 2019, which is about a 27% decrease. With the first eight months total, 2021 is down about 79,000 altogether, which is about a 12% decrease from the first eight months of 2019. In our occupancy tax, so with, again, the, the blue line being 19, the, the dark brown line for 21 is actually the highest collection of the three years. So we're about 12,000 higher in August of '21 compared to 2019, so about a 33% increase there. The first eight months combined, we're down about 49,000 altogether as compared to 2019, which is about a 23% decrease. And then in our oil impact revenue, so you can see in, in August, we're, we're pretty close to where we were in 2019. We're actually up about $6,000 compared to August of 2019. So less than 1% increase, but it is an increase. And then the first eight months total, so we're down about 506,000 compared to the first eight months of 2019. So that's about a 6% decrease compared to those first eight months of 2019. And then on the next slide here, so the chart on the left is our general fund expenses. So being through eight months, we would expect we'd be, you know, two-thirds, two-thirds at our benchmark, so about 67%. The red, the red on the first chart is our expenses, so about 61% expended. So we are ahead of where we need to be on our general fund expenses. And then also you can see on our general fund revenue on the green, the green chart on the right, about 82% collected so far, which again, a lot of our property taxes and items like that come in beginning of the year, so I, I expect that to flatten out quite a bit by the end of 2021. And then moving on to our enterprise fund, again, the chart to the left in the red shows the enterprise fund expenses from water sewer solid waste storm and then our wastewater plant. So we've spent about 58%, almost 60% of our enterprise fund budget through eight months. And then on the chart on the right in the green, you can see we're actually ahead of our benchmark, so we've collected about just under 73% of our enterprise fund revenue. So with that, I'll do my best to answer any questions, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Any questions for Mr. Maury on the monthly financial? If there are no questions, I look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any questions, comments? Very none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item up is our downtown square bid. Mr. Winningham?
Mr. President and Commissioners, if your OneNote is working, there were some connectivity issues, but we have before you the Dickinson Town Square bid. And there's a bid tabulation sheet listed in there. The, the low bid for the General Prime, which when you look at the North Dakota statutes, we're going with the lowest bid for the General Prime, and that was Two's Construction for the base bid of $3,598,700. There was a low bid for General Mechanical, which was, the Mechanical Prime bid, which was the low bid of Central Mechanical at 222,400. And then the Electrical Prime bid, the low bid was Denny's Electric at 292,600 for this project. For consideration this evening is the approval of the low bid for this project and the discussion for alternates that were up for bid. The alternates up for bid were 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 11. And after consideration for bid sufficiency, we have struck the alternate number five, which was Lithocrete, which is a process and a, an amount that was, that was outside of the scope of the, of what we considered to be sufficient at essentially almost $1 million over. So that alternate five will not be considered.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any discussion on the bids?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. With the alternates and such, how would we go about this attorney wankel on approving the different alternates and things like that if we, it is something that we believe should be included in the bid?
And I would ask to actually, Mr. Zurov, to weigh in on this as well, given his experience dealing with these types of bid situations. I would believe it would make sense to start with a baseline, obviously, as you indicated it, if it's in there and if you pack it. And then if there's additional alternates, surely we can take those one by one, but if Mr. Zurov wants to weigh in as well, he's, he's got the expertise in this area.
I would think that we would, you would approve the, the base bids and then maybe talk about each alternate. One of the things I think was discussed at the work session was the combined bids, but you know, that, that is kind of thrown out when you already deleted the alternates that Mr. Winningham has, has thrown. I guess that's, unless you know specifically what alternates you want to do in one motion, that's the way I'd kind of attack it.
So, Mr. President and Commissioners, what, the second tab showed the total construction costs that included a contingency of a 5% contingency. Of those low, general construction low bids, they totaled $1,113,700. You add the subtotal of the contingency of 5%, and it was $4,319,385. There are soft costs, owner's soft costs associated with this bid. They're indicated, they have an asterisk by the ones that weren't being added to this subtotal, and that was $394,300. The total project cost at this point was $4,713,685. Then there were the number of alternates that I called out. The recommendation would be that we accept the low bid, accept the total project cost, and we consider the alternates at a, at a later time, back with the, the company that is the lowest bidder. That would mean that once the bid is accepted, once the approval is done, then we can go back and talk about each one of those alternates. Those alternates that we, you have highlighted on this tab that were yellow, I won't spend a lot of time on it, but it was, the high amount for one of them was four pergolas for $139,900, and that was item number six. The rest are much smaller than that, but the total for those that we considered, that we are considering alternates was $384,000. That would bring the total project cost, if we accepted all of the alternates, to $5,97,365. Correction, $685,000. I'll say that one more time. $5,900. Say that four more times.
Commissioners, discussion on the base? We'll start with the base.
I mean, there's, on the base, I don't have anything. Of the alternates, there's only two there that are considered not able to do at a later time, which would be the splash pad lighting and the pergolas, so. That's something we can't add later. Everything else could be done at any time. If I'm understanding that correct?
Commissioner Frederick, you're, you're correct. The, the two that are, and they're fairly high value, it was $80,350 for the integrated splash pad lighting. I had recommended previously in the work session that that would be one we could strike out upper consideration, but it would be difficult to add that back in after construction starts because it's integral to the construction of the splash pad. And then the pergolas being added second because it's also part of the construction process, from my understanding, but it'd be difficult to add later. So that, that's the four, there's a total of seven pergolas in the project. These are the additional four. So if we went with just the base bid and didn't add this pergola alternate, we'd have three pergolas.
Do we know what the point of, the point of no return is on the, adding the pergolas in terms of the construction process? At what point in the process would be the, I mean, I would imagine that earthwork wouldn't really factor into that, and I, and I don't imagine we're going to be putting much more into it if we were to break ground this fall, more than that.
I would hold to the, generally, and maybe it's not today, within a few days, the 60-day bid timeline. So we have 60 days in those alternate bids that, that, that initial bid would be acceptable on those alternates. After that 60-day period, it would be a change to the project separately than this bid.
I do have one question here. I'm looking at the, the bid tab, and the only thing under alternate four in the bid tab for splash pad lighting is $8,350.
That's just the electrical.
Okay, so then the actual lighting would fall...
Lighting is the $80,350. That includes the...
Where does that fall into the bid tab, though?
We're buying that outside. They didn't bid that. We're buying that outside the bid.
Yep. It's essentially $72,000 in costs.
Okay, I see that.
We buy the equipment and then the electrician.
Yep.
My understanding from the work session, we're going to cover the alternate 10 and So in looking at the scope of the project, there was two areas, the alleyway behind the, the new town square and the sidewalks. Those would be costs the city would, would pick up because we'd want to correct those now. There's some corrections need to be done during the process, but it would be more reasonable to do those during the process. So this, so we would already consider that amount. But I think it would be best to go ahead and add those to the vote. So we want to do that anyway, but I think it's cheaper during the project to do it for the city. That's the $51,000 and the $59,000. I'm not sure if we can do that cheaper separately in the project. So I think when we talked about that before, we just said by sequence, it would make more sense for the city to keep that in the bid so that the company with all their onsite work and product are already, already there to do it.
And that was my, my question too is like Mr. Otterman's, what's the point of no return on the two items that can't be done later? So I mean, if we don't accept them today and then before we start the splash pad, can we say, we decide we want the lights and do that as a change order? I mean, obviously, I don't believe that's going to get installed this fall, so.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I mean, are we looking at March? Are we looking at April? Is it looking earlier than that?
As, as a, as a request for information to either, either the accepted bid company or through JLG, I don't know if Zach matters here. Maybe you can, maybe by sequence, you'd have to look at the timeline, construction timeline, and that may not, we may not be able to have that answer right this second, but at what point would we miss adding the lighting? So that would be splash pads going in right before concrete, I don't know that, that's what...
What would be the lighting and the pergolas?
Lighting and the pergolas.
So I can't answer it to the date, but I'll just let you know a little bit about the process. So once a contractor is selected and you say, go forward with the project, there's a few months of time where we're working with the contractor. They're looking at the drawings and they're starting to put their order together, like for steel, for example. So they create their own drawings of the steel and they give that to us and they make sure, we review it, make sure we design the steel per your design, and we've got it all there. So there's a few months where we're actually not doing construction, but we're already kind of making decisions based on the steel that's going to be installed and ordering it. So, kind of a non-answer answer is that process can wait very, you know, as long as you want it to, but the price could change. So like, the quicker you make the decision, the more sure the cost is. But if you delayed that decision for a few months, this price is no longer guaranteed. The value of steel may have gone up, so the prices may change. So it's, it's, the amount of time you have is related to the cost. So it's, it's not as simple as you have a month. You have more than that if you're willing to potentially pay more.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not, not a simple...
Yeah, that's fair, yeah.
So, so what I'm hearing for the two things, go back to the 60-day for the bid to be valid, we'd lose it after that 60 days? Or if we accepted the alternate in that bid, could we then later cut it? Would that be, would that be, would be able to do that? Means if we accepted, we, we say we're going to do the lighting, but it's determined that we don't want that alternate, can we then cut that alternate before, before it actually, any margin, any, any work is done for that item? If that makes sense what I'm saying?
You could, you could choose not to purchase the equipment that you're going to purchase directly, and then you could ask for it. You could issue a proposal request that asks the contractor, okay, we're choosing not to do this. How much money are you going to take off your price to not install the electrical?
The $83,500.
And then there would be a, a process of communication back and forth about what the agreeable value for that is.
So it does give you a, I guess the risk would be the $83,500. We don't do that project. We don't spend the money on the $72,000 lighting.
Because we're purchasing it ourselves.
Because we're purchasing that out of, out of scope of the bid. And for the pergolas, I think that would be based on when, that, that, we just have to hold it at 60-day mark. The low bidder currently also bid that alternate lower, so there's some savings on that, about 40, $44,000 savings.
Correct. Are there any other questions, Commissioners?
I would move to approve the General Prime base bid in alternate number 10 and alternate On said bid.
So we have a motion to approve the low base bid with alternate 10 and alternate 11.
Is that inappropriate?
I was just gonna, I was just thinking, Commissioner Otterman, considering we are doing these one by one, and whether you do agree on alternates or not, it would probably best if you amended your motion. Let's address the baseline bid first, get a vote on that, and then we proceed accordingly based on the alternates.
Okay, so amended.
And so we need, is this a baseline bid for General, Mechanical, and Electrical, or so it is for all three of them?
Correct.
The baseline bid.
Oh, so it, we don't do separate motions for General, Mechanical, and Electrical, just do the combined?
Yes, I believe according to Mr. Zurov, based on our work study discussion, you are bidding all three, so the baseline bid for all three of those would be appropriate.
So that'd be the $4,319,385 then?
I believe that's the figure, yes.
It would be the General Prime, low bid, Two's Construction, the Mechanical Prime, low bid, Central Mechanical, and the Electrical Prime, low bid, Denny's Electric. Those three totals.
Would that...
I, I, I further amend my motion to include the combined, General, Mechanical, and Electrical.
I don't think we can say combined because that, we have a tab down there, so it would be the low bid general, low bid mechanical, low bid electrical.
So would that include the contingency or not?
So I'll go, I'll go back to the, to the project. That, those are costs that are owner's costs?
So it'd be the $4,113,700.
So it would be the $4,113,700.
Okay. Do you amend it to that again?
Yeah.
This is important, so it's good discussion. This is important, so it's a good discussion.
I would second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Odom to approve low bid, general, mechanical, and electrical. Include all, no, we're not including alternates. And the second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Odom?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Odom, do you have a motion? Or does any other commissioner have a motion on alternates?
Mrs. Winko, should we do each alternate separately or?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move to approve the low bid on alternate number 10.
I have a motion to approve the low bid on alternate number 10.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Odom?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
I'll make the same motion on alternate number 11.
I have a motion to approve alternate number 11 by Commissioner Odom.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Odom?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Are there any other alternate motions?
I just, so splash pad lighting, since we're buying it, we have some time on that one. We wouldn't have to do that today, correct? Because we're buying the equipment.
The, there was an alternate under electrical for the 8350.
So we have at-risk 8350 dollars.
If we wanted to add that one alternate from electrical so that we could, we're essentially risking the 8350 potentially, that's based on Denny's Electric.
But that, we didn't approve that portion, though.
We would have to then do alternate splash pad lighting approval. That would be for alternate number four.
The, well, yeah, the 8350 includes the.
That's all we're approving, just the 8350. If you, if.
Right.
We'd have time to consider that as a commission for that 72,000 and that could be.
If we wanted to actually buy the equipment.
Other funding. But if we don't do that, we may be on, use the term on the hook, but we may, that, we would be accepting that that's a 8350 install. But if you don't have the items to install, I'm not sure if you'd be held to that. But that's probably a legal contract question.
While Commissioners are thinking that over, my suggestion would be that we also, that a commissioner would consider the alternate number three since it is at no cost to us.
Well, I was just looking at that.
But I thought it's included in the base bid, so I, do we need to?
I think we should still approve that.
Mr. President, if it's identified on the bit, this bid as alternates, I think it would make sense to make a separate motion for that.
That one's an easy one. I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Frederick makes the motion for alternate number three, the flagpole at zero cost.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Odom?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Any others?
Well, for discussion purposes, I'll make a motion to approve number four, the splash pad lighting electrical for 8350 and we can discuss the other part at a different time, I guess.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Frederick on alternate number four, electrical for 8350 with a second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion?
I guess I would, I would just ask if other Commissioners think that the splash pad is something ultimately that we will get the value out of that we're looking for there? Because I, I mean, I guess a couple considerations I would ask us to make is how often would it be in use? Like how many months of the year would we actually be able to use the splash pad lighting? Would it be on over, you know, after, after dark when splash pad lighting would be the most valuable? Because the lighting would be able to light up the water mostly at night. What's the headache that that would create for Chief Dossinger and his staff at the police department with bars being in very near vicinity to that splash pad? And if we're going to have that splash pad and lighting, would that be like moths to a flame?
Zach, can you comment on, the splash pad doesn't have to be on for the lighting, correct?
Actually, that's not true. The lighting is, is, produces heat such that the splash pad itself needs to be running for the lighting to run. So they, you can run the splash pad without the lights, but if you want the lights to run, the water has to be running.
So it couldn't be ran in the wintertime? Like if there was an event downtown in the evening, just have lights on the ground, you couldn't run those lights just for beautification?
That's correct, unless the water was also running.
Well, that's, okay.
So I guess, and that's why I asked that question is because, I mean, realistically, you can probably use this thing six, six months of the year, if that.
That's pushing it.
That's, yeah, that's pushing it. And would we want to have it on at night? Chief Dossinger, is that a headache you'd want to deal with?
I think time would definitely tell with that, but I think also what type of separation security system you can have in place will all dictate that, you know, security cameras, warning devices, those are all things that would come to play with this.
Well, and I'm sure they wouldn't just run all night either. You know, it would be a.
Timer?
Yeah, they would be, they'd shut them off at a certain time so that they're not, you know, at 1:15 when everyone's.
I'm not trying to be a fun hater because I do think it would be a beatification thing for downtown, but.
Well, right now it sounds like the fun place.
So like when we go to other towns, you know, as a family, we choose the splash park, but not at 10:00 PM. I, you know, I'm not taking my kids there at 10:00 PM. And because I was looking at pictures online of the lit splash pads and, and thinking maybe during the day you'd see something and I, I couldn't see anything.
Yeah.
Online on those photos that showed splash pads with lighting during the day and with our extremely long days in the summer, when we're going to be using it. You know, I think of like at first on first, you know, if you're staying later, your kids likely aren't staying. You know, by that point in time, your kids are probably headed home, so, and you probably want that space for people at the concert, not necessarily to run through the splash pad at 10:00 PM at night. So, you know, this is one that I am leaning away from. I feel like I'm not sure, sure I can, I'm capturing $80,000 of value in this one.
Well, when you can't use it unless the splash pad is running.
Yeah.
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 That changes the.
It does, because if it could have been used in the winter, you know, just as a.
Lighting thing, yeah.
Yeah, we fund and light up the snow and stuff.
Right?
So then, actually, I'll rescind my motion on that one.
Thanks for making the motion, though, so we can have discussion about it.
Yeah.
And do we have to make a motion either way on each of these alternates or can we just let them be? Or how does this work?
Commissioner Sobeluk, you just simply have to.
On those that you decide to move forward with, what you are doing currently.
So we have a rescission of the motion for alternate number four, the splash pad lighting. Are there any other alternates that?
Mr. President, just for point of clarification, you two have two seconds, so you do, should vote. I presume the, the motion will die upon the vote, so we should probably proceed accordingly that way. I'm assuming, because I didn't hear a rescission of the.
Mr. Frederick did.
I rescind my.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Well, for discussion purposes, I'm going to make another one since this is one that can't be added later, but number six, add four pergolas, 1399, I'd make a motion to approve that alternate.
And I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve alternate number six by Commissioner Frederick with a second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion?
I do think there's value on this one. They are doing some fundraising with naming opportunities for the pergolas, so I do think there's some value there.
Not tree gross, you have an all-day concert outside or, you know, something.
Yep.
It's nice to have a little bit of shade where you are.
Provides a little cover.
Mm-hmm, provides a little cover.
Any further discussion on alternate number six? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Odom?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Are there any other alternates? I think this covers everything on the.
I mean, the wood, the wood benches, I would think if we decide to do that, that could be done later as a change order. Those could be added. Pavilion sound system, I would imagine, that's something our IT department could probably tackle at some point if we needed it. And the gas heaters, I mean, would the stuff be there for the gas heaters? Just they wouldn't, heaters wouldn't be there? Would the gas piping be there as part of the base bid?
Yeah, as part of the design, the infrastructure to get power and gas to that location is being provided as part of the base bid. And then this is just the additional piping directly took them all up. So it is something that you could do in the future.
Okay, thanks, Zach. All right, is there anything else on the downtown square bid? That should cover the downtown square. We do have public hearings this evening. First item up in the public hearing is our 2022 budget and this will be the first reading of, make sure I get my ordinance right, ordinance 1725. And this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Before you is the ordinance and after the work session, there was no changes to the ordinance that's being presented to you. So this would be the ordinance that we would need first reading and a public hearing on and for the public. Our total general fund expenditure is $22,451,331. So upon that, I'll answer any questions you may have. And I'm asking for approval of the ordinance number 1725.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on 1725? This is a public hearing, so if anyone has any questions about ordinance 1725, this is our 2022 budget, please come forward, state your name, and ask your question of the city commission or staff. And if you wish, if you're watching online, if the internet's up, you may call in at
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Odom?
I think it maybe would be appropriate for us to pull up that PowerPoint that we had with the highlights from the work session today so that we could share that with the public.
Okay. Mr. Mori, can you get to that quickly?
And then maybe Mrs. Carlson can just go over those highlights real quickly. Sorry, I kind of dropped that on you, Robbie.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music unfold when connected.
Yeah, that's exactly.
You want to run through, run through this quick for them?
Yep, if you could dim the lights, please, so they can see it. Okay, for our budget highlights for '22, our general fund is balanced at $22,451,331. This is revenue and expenses, which is 8.19% higher than '21. The city's total fund expenditure, this is all departments, all funds, our budget is 4.85% higher than '21. General fund tax levy is 4.7 million for the general fund and this is with no city property tax increase for 2022 and the city levy has not changed since 2017. The oil impact revenue subsidy to general fund will be, will be 3,613,225 compared to 4.2 million, which in '21, which is a 14.43% decrease. In '22, administrative fees from the enterprise funds, which is your water, sewer, storm, treatment plant, is, supports the general fund stayed the same at 15%. In the '22 budget, there will be no cost of living increase, proposing a built-in performance matrix step increase of 2% for full-time employees. Anyone currently at step 18 will not see a performance increase. Our wage study, our new matrix wage study stops at step 18. But we are proposing a health credit benefit change from a 40-year plan to a 2.5% every five years to a 20-year plan at 1% every year. In other word, every year that you're here, you receive a 1% health credit on what you need to pay as an employee for your health credit. This is approximately $131,778 increase to the employer's side. New positions proposed for general fund is 10 with one additional promotion position. This is an increase of wages of $510,340. This is on an annual basis. Of 10 positions, seven positions are four for police and three for fire. General fund cash reserve allocation will include $475,374 of public safety equipment. The unassigned cash that Mr. Mori gave for our financials is the unassigned cash, this is where the cash reserve comes for this, this equipment. Capital projects for '22 is proposed at $11,330 out of the oil impact fund. Community betterment projects of $5 million are proposed out of our development impact fund. This is to include $2 million for the career technical school, 1.5 million for the sports complex, and 1.5 million for mausoleum. Proposed 1% sales tax allocation is 6.9 million, again, $2 million for town square project, $2.5 million for property tax relief, $750,000 for the Stark Development, and $300,000 for the airport. Proposed loan out of our future fund investment of $2 million for the town square project. Proposed half percent sales tax allocation is 3.5 million, including 1.7 million in property tax relief and the community center revenue bond payment of 1.2 million. '22 interest revenue earned will be allocated as $639,000 for general capital leases and property tax relief, $100,000 to the city defined benefit liability, $300,000 for public safety radios, $200,000 for maintenance reserve, and $50,000 for downtown streetscape.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Again, this is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to address the city commission, please come forward, state your name and your question.
Jeff Fitz, Dickinson City resident. I'd like to thank Commissioners Sobeluk and Mr. Odom for their good information and insight on the splash pad issue. I'm still wondering if you got your answer, if it's going to shoot icicles out, so, in the winter. But what I'd like to address on the budget is the mausoleum issue that I saw under community benefit, betterment projects. Has anybody on the commission, was anybody here when the last one was built? Has anybody there on the commission or? Has anybody there on the commission, or otherwise talked to any of the people who work in the cemeteries about adding on to a mausoleum? Is there any awareness of that other than just moving ahead with the project? Because I work in the cemeteries, and so I'm kind of curious if you guys have had some input on a proposed project for $1.5 million.
Yeah, Mr. Fisher with...
Yeah, we had, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, they went through a planning process and the procurement process on, they've got it planned out already. They've got the design, and the nice thing about that project is that that's money that we eventually get back, because we do, we do sell those spots in the mausoleum.
Yep. I understand you sell them, but...So one of the things I do in the cemetery, and I do it for the city of Dickinson as a private contractor, if you guys are familiar with surface vaults, you've surely seen them if you've driven past the cemeteries. They look like a big concrete slab with a nameplate on the end of it. Some of them are just decorative covers, but the majority of them are exactly what the name "surface vault" implies. The vault with the casket and remains is directly under that cover, flush with the surface of the ground. Michelle Olson invented them in the late 1940s. It was a great idea that failed. The idea was, you put them in ahead of time, winter comes, you have frozen ground, you pop the cap off, you have your funeral, there's no frozen ground to deal with, there's no snow removal to deal with. Everything's fine, except what happens to concrete in the frost zone in North Dakota. It busts up. And once it starts busting up, it lets water into this box, which is like an ice cube tray. And so ice expands in your ice cube tray. It certainly does it there whether there's a casket in there or not, which is why all of those are deteriorating, which is why now the city of Dickinson, because after they knew this problem was there five years after they made them, and they continued doing them until Mr. Karski outlawed them in the 90s and took great heat for it. So 50 years of installing these in the city cemeteries. Now I'm being hired at taxpayer expense to lower them down six feet where they should have been in the first place, because when you lay a body on the ground, eventually you're going to have bones, and that's the stark truth. So now you're putting them in a building in North Dakota, above ground. So I was wondering if anybody had thought through some of the consequences and talked to anybody who actually works in the cemeteries?
President Decker?
About that?
If I may. Yes, it was, we talk all the time. The cemetery's under the city public works. There is a need and a push for additional mausoleum vaults and a lot of the remains of not just the crypts, I'm trying to think of the word, the crypts, but also those that, for the urns, too. So we're looking at columbariums, we're looking at different things. There's a big push by the local, you know...
Funeral homes?
Thank you, thank you. It's not there yet. Funeral homes, too, there's a lot of requests to have more columbariums, a lot of requests to have more crypts. The current columbarium and crypts, we don't have many issues with. So yes, we've dealt with funeral homes, we dealt with the cemetery people.
Well, I'm one of the cemetery people, and nobody's dealt with...
You're not, you're not a cemetery employee.
No, you don't have a cemetery employee anymore who digs graves. You guys forfeited that during the boom. Now it's done privately.
Right. I know that, because we pay you to do that.
No, you don't, actually. The funeral homes pay me. I work directly for the funeral homes now, not for the city at all in regards to burials.
To burials, but to...
For the reburials, you pay me.
We pay you, and for the surface vault work, we pay. That's part of the budget.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, this is, this is another problem that's down the road. And the funeral homes, as I pointed out with the surface vaults, they're the ones who created the surface vaults. Okay? And now they're asking for another thing above ground. We have lots of space in western North Dakota. We're not New York City, where space is at a premium for things like burials. Okay? A person could certainly look at acquiring, you already have another cemetery that's been all outlined, plotted out since Karski was here, with a cemetery commission that the public was participant in, which was done away with. So now you don't even have that input.
There has been a request by the community, and that's why we moved forward.
I would like you guys to consider more than just the funeral homes and the churches on it, who don't deal with the consequences directly. The way that mausoleum was built, and I was here when it was built.
Okay.
Okay? That's stacked concrete culverts. That's what the bodies go into, the caskets go into, stacked concrete culverts with a facade around it of granite. If that tornado that hit the south side of town had gone through the north side of town, you'd have pieces as far as that went. No, and you heat that building. You don't heat a cemetery. So I would like you guys to kind of consider that while you have the time to consider it. And I'm not even saying that you don't need to go with it. I'm just saying you should talk to some people outside of the people who want this, as opposed to, you know, so... That's a valid point. Okay, well, that's a valid point. That's fine. Okay, thank you.
Valuable input, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions on ordinance 1725, which is city budget for 2022? If you're watching online, area code 701-456-7006. The public hearing is still going on the 2022 budget. Seeing no one else from the public has any comments, and there is no one online with any comments, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any further comments for city staff on the 2022 budget, ordinance 1725? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on the first reading of ordinance 1725. I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Sobel?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next public hearing is Chapter 39, the wireless communication. This will be ordinance 1726, and this will be presented by Mr. Josephson, I guess it's Mr. Hadley this evening, and City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President and the commission. This is the first reading in public hearing for this ordinance. It deals with small cell communication within the public right-of-way. It's a kind of a new option, new option for the cell companies to provide that service. It's regulated by the FCC, a lot of it, and so we've had a couple of workshops and then also public hearings for the planning commission. No general public input on it. The planning commission did recommend approval of this, and staff would recommend approval of it as well. It does allow installations within our public right-of-way, which right now we don't currently allow.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Mrs. Winko, any additional comments?
Mr. President, Commissioners, I would just add that there is a major push for this. We get requests all the time from the North Dakota Department of Transportation to sign agreements with regard to these facilities. We are in the technology era, so we're going to see more of these, and I think it's very important that the city has something on the books, that we're able to regulate these to some degree. And I would also stand for that approval as well.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing. Anyone has any concerns, comments on Chapter 39 amendment, ordinance 1726, to the wireless communications? Please come forward, state your name. Let us know your concerns or have any comments. If you're watching online, 701-456-7006. Anyone have any comments? Any comments or concerns on 1726? Please come forward, state your name. I'll close the public hearing. Seeing there are no questions or concerns on ordinance 1726, this is a Chapter 39 amendment to our wireless communication. And I would look, are there any questions or comments, Commissioners? Now I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve ordinance 1726 first reading.
We have a motion to approve the first reading of 1726 by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Sobel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have another public hearing, Chapter 39 amendment to our adult entertainment centers. This will be ordinance 1727, and this will be presented by, again, Mr. Hadley and City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President and commission. This is a, an amendment to clean up our existing code. You can see there's amendments to Chapter 3 and Chapter 39. This particular ordinance deals with Chapter 39's amendment, and what it does is, any adult entertainment as defined would be allowed in the limited industrial and industrial zones with a special use permit granted by the planning commission and yourselves. Had a number of workshops on those, and the planning commission had a public hearing on it. There was no opposition to it, and staff would recommend approval, as written.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Mrs. Winko, any comments?
No, Mr. President. I think this one's pretty straightforward.
All right, thank you.
This replaces and cleans up the existing one they already had, correct?
Commissioner Otterman, so the Chapter 39 amendments that we're discussing will go hand in hand with the Chapter 3 as we get later down the list, but this one specifically to allow it in those particular zoning districts. Currently, it's prohibited pursuant to what's currently in the code, so we just need to clean it up, make that allowable in those districts. So that's the only portion of this that's changing. So in reality, it's a pretty minor change. We're just allowing those in those zoning districts.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for city staff? Not this is a public hearing. If anyone has any concerns, please come forward, state your name. This is the first reading of ordinance 1727, and it is a Chapter 39 amendment to our code. Anyone have any concerns? Comments or questions? If you're watching online, 701-456-7006. Anyone have any concerns? Comments or questions? Again, if you have any concerns, please come forward, state your name. Seeing no one has any concerns, on ordinance 1727, Commissioners, do you have any questions for city staff? Comments? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on 1727.
Mr. President, make a motion for first reading of ordinance 1727.
I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1727 by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Ms. Sobel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. The next item up is the, for a public hearing of Chapter 39 amendment definitions, and this will be ordinance 1728. Mr. Hadley?
Thank you, Mr. President and commission. This ordinance actually deals with all the definitions that correspond to the last two ordinances that you have just acted upon. So we just wanted to clean it up and basically have it in one place, so you have definitions that are appropriate for both of those previous ordinances.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on this ordinance? Again, this is a Chapter 39 amendment definitions. This is a public hearing. So if anyone from the public wishes to come forward as any questions about the Chapter 39 amendment definitions, please come forward, state your name, let the commission know your concerns or questions on the definitions. If you're watching online, 701-456-7006. Again, anyone from the public has any questions or concerns on this amendment? If you have any questions on ordinance 1728, please come forward. Seeing no one has any questions or concerns on ordinance 1728, Commission, do you have any questions for city staff? Not I'd look for a motion on ordinance 1728.
So move.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 1728 first reading.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Otterman. The motion to approve is by Commissioner Sobel. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Sobel?
Aye.
Mr. Otterman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Our last public hearing of the evening is the Chapter 3 amendment to our code of adult entertainment. This will be ordinance 1729. Again, Mr. Hadley and City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President and commission. This Chapter 3 amendment, I'll leave if there's any questions to the city attorney, Ms. Winko. It was heard concurrently and discussed concurrently in our workshops, just so it made sense. With that, staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley.
Mr. President, Commissioners, just to give you some context of what you're looking at, as we worked through Chapter 39, we knew that there were going to be some changes that we need to make to Chapter 3 so that they run consistently together. It is, if you look at the ordinance in front of you, it's going to look like we got rid of the whole thing. I thought it was much easier to start fresh and incorporate some of the existing code provisions that the city already had, as well as adopt some other conditions or provisions from other communities. And you'll also see that our previous code kind of lumped everything together, and so I thought it was much easier to follow by breaking it out and making it much easier to read. We don't want to have to have someone spend an hour trying to find a code provision when we can break it down and make it more accessible and easier to read. So you're going to see a little bit of those things kind of divvied out in the ordinance. And then as well, just so that the commission is aware, there was a license process previously adopted as a part of the prior code provision. We still have that as a requirement. The thought process is that the applicant does have to submit the necessary paperwork. We want to make sure that we are monitoring and regulating these facilities, and these provisions will allow us to do that, and I would stand for any questions if anyone has any.
And Ms. Winko, just to add into that, that would be after a special use permit is granted by the planning commission and the board.
Correct. Just to clarify in case there's any question, so what will happen is, we wanted it to be a two-step process. We wanted oversight with regard to the regulations. So it will come in front of planning and zoning. It will go through the special permit, special use permit process. permit process, then it will come to this city commission for ultimate approval of a license. And, so you get the application, and then once that application, or the permit application is approved, then the city will look at that on a renewal basis every year, just to make sure that we're monitoring, everything is in compliance. And the only thing that I will note is that the ordinance that you have in front of you does not indicate the annual renewal license fee. And visiting with the city administrator, Winningham, he would like to keep that at the set $2,000 fee. So, that would be the only modification based on what is not currently in your packet. So, if you do decide to pass that motion, it would be with that addition as well, that that fee be set as it currently is now.
All right, thank you. Any questions before we go to the public hearing?
Yes, so I am thinking there maybe is a wrong attachment here. Because when we just voted on 39, I just opened up the same thing on 3. And so both the public hearing, Chapter 39 amendments on adult entertainment center and Chapter 3 amendments, they're both the same attachment. And so I didn't realize they should be two different ones until now that I'm looking at the same one at this one, and so I'm wondering if we voted on the wrong one a couple minutes ago.
That one would have been the adult entertainment center 39. This one is you're specifically looking at the, this one is, the top of the heading, Commissioner Sobeluk should read, an ordinance amending and reenacting Chapter 3 of the city code of the city of Dickinson.
Should be this one.
Yes.
And then if you go back on the one note, if you go to the one that says Chapter 39, it's the same document. So, I apologize, I only printed one because they were the same, and I realized there's no 39 in this, and.
I think you may have just received the wrong.
Yeah, Commissioner Sobeluk, good catch, there may be, that may be an attachment.
I think it's just the attachments were sent wrong to us.
It should have been the 39 amendment which was.
Because there is the 30, Chapter 39 underneath, Chapter 39 definitions. But those are all definitions, there isn't anything to do specifically with the adult entertainment other than the definitions.
It's looking like it's an attachment error in one note. And I can certainly email the commissioners the correct ordinance for 39 that we just discussed. That one essentially is just, again, changing the zoning designations for the allowance of that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, and I have no questions on the Chapter 3.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing, this is Ordinance 1729. If you have any comments or questions, please come forward, state your name. This is a Chapter 3 amendment to our city code pertaining to adult entertainment. Anyone from the public, please state your name. Let the city commission hear your concerns. If you're watching online, 701-456-7006. Anyone from the public with any concerns on Ordinance 1729? Any concerns on Ordinance 1729 from the general public? This is a public hearing. Seeing no one has any comments or concerns on Ordinance 1729, I'll close the public hearing. This is the first reading of 1729, so I'd look, if there are no more questions or comments from the commissioners, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve first reading of 1729.
We have a motion to approve the first reading of 1729 by Commissioner Frederick.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. At this point, we'll go to the public comments, not on the agenda. If you have any concerns, comments, that were not on the agenda, any items that weren't on the agenda this evening, please come forward, state your name, let the commission know your concerns or comments on items not on the agenda. If you're watching online, 701-456-7006. You may call in and discuss anything that was not on the agenda this evening.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Blackwood. And I, this item was not on the agenda, but I know that it's come before the commission in the past. I'm here regarding a property that belongs to Justin Ducart, and I'd like to know the status of what's going on with the property. I talked to Blaine Ducart a couple of days ago and have been told that he had a certain amount of time to either accept an offer by a person who gave him an offer on his property, or the property was going to be basically, yeah, put into the condemnation process. And, it's my understanding, after contacting the person who had given him an offer, that the offer was not accepted. And so, the property is now supposed to be coming before you folks, and then will be trashed.
I'm not aware of it, but, Ms. Blackwood, but I think our city attorney is.
Ms. Blackwood, I can answer that question for you and give you an update.
That would be great.
Yes. We, Mr. Ducart has also been in communication with my office with regard to the property issues. We were waiting to hear whether that individual is going to be purchasing that particular property. I'm hearing now that that's probably not a likelihood. So what will happen is, the city has to move forward, there will be a hearing with the city commission, evidence will be presented, and then at that point, we will determine if there's enough to move forward with the full condemnation of the property. So there's a legal process that we have to go through with that. If we were to get an order for that, then the city takes possession and obviously can determine at that time what remedies the city wants to take with regard to the structure. Can be cleanup, can be tear down, it's too premature to say one way or the other right now, but those are options on the table in the event that we are successful with the condemnation. So that will be forthcoming.
Okay, it's also my understanding that he's not to be on the property because there's supposed to be nobody on the property at all. That's my understanding of what's going on, is that correct?
There has been a previous, the municipal court judge has issued previous orders to have no trespass orders. I do know that we've had Mr. Ducart in court on several occasions for violation of those orders, so there is, I believe there's still a standing order for the no trespass.
Well, he needs his butt held back into court again.
Well, I do believe he has been there recently and other places, so it's very likely, obviously, if somebody is cited on the property, the Dickinson Police Department would go over and take care of it accordingly.
He doesn't seem to be too terrified of you guys, as I'm sure you're aware. He was in the, he was in the garage with his mom's car on Saturday, in the middle garage. He was in there again with some of his friends with the van. I live right across the street, and so I have been living there for 12 years now, and so I've seen what's going on there for the last 12 years. And he seems to just be flagrant of any kind of law and thinks it doesn't apply to him. And I just don't want to see this continue to happen again. I know that he didn't accept the offer that was given to him by one of the contractors here in town, and so now I think he thinks he can just go ahead and do whatever he wants to. And what I'm afraid is going to happen is that the city's going to take another 30 days, or 45 days, or 60 days to do whatever they need to do to have this continue to go on forever. So I'm, I'm really hoping that you do have some teeth to sink in now, that this process gets done.
Sure.
And that he will stay off the property, along with his parents and the rest of the, his kindred spirits that hang around there all the time.
Sure.
To keep him off the property.
I completely understand. Of course, if you are on the property and you're observing someone in the residence, please, please certainly call it in. I can tell you that we are in the process of moving forward, so it will be forthcoming. We obviously want to work with property owners as much as we can, but we understand that there's a time and a place where that's just simply not realistic anymore. And, and my understanding in talking with Mr. Ducart is I think we're there. So, I can assure you that we are looking at it, we are moving forward with it unless something drastically changes and the property gets cleaned up, which I highly doubt, but again, we are moving forward and that I can assure you of.
Well, I know he doesn't have any money, so he's not going to be able to do anything with the property. There's no way he's going to be able to, to make a difference. It is cleaned up a lot better than it was, but that doesn't mean that he's brought it into compliance, that he's got any capability to bring it into client, compliance. He won't stay off the property because he doesn't think he has to. He comes in, as you all know, all hours of the day and night, and does whatever he wants to. And, I haven't been before the commission, but Nicole has several times. We have written letters, we have talked to the police, we talk to the police when they come and do their rounds, which they are there all the time. And, they've been wonderful about coming and doing what they can, but time's up. I mean, time is up.
Sure.
And we really need your help to push this forward, because he won't, he won't do anything unless you push it forward. So I'm really hopeful that you can do that.
Sure. And, and I will applaud, Mr. Ducart has been very diligent about keeping us up to speed and with the property, and we have had several communications within the last several weeks about the status of the property, so I can assure you, it will move forward. And ultimately, it's going to be this decision by this commission to decide whether they're going to author, or, excuse me, approve the condemnation, but we will get there. So we will have to go through the motions, it will run through the legal process, you'll have an opportunity to be present at the public hearing when we discuss the issue and voice your concerns again.
Okay, I hope so. And thank you all very much for what you've done, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public have any? Anyone from the public?
Hello, commissioners. My name is Nicole Wald, and I live at 215 Third Avenue Southwest. I live next to Justin Ducart. I'm just going to read what I wrote up, some of this stuff's already been answered, but I guess I'm a little confused because, and first I want to thank Blaine Ducart, because I have talked to three people in the last seven years that I've lived here regarding this property, and he has been the best one to get back to me in a timely manner, and very nice. Also, the police department. I guess my question is, I was told too that, first of all, when it got posted on June 8th, I was told that he had 30 days from that date, okay? And I was also told that he has no more options with the city, you're done with him, he doesn't get any more options. And, so my question is, if that's the case, then why was somebody else showing the property yesterday afternoon? And I already, I already talked to Blaine about this. It was not the same person that has the contract before. But anyway, I'm going to read you my little letter here. "It will be seven years in November that I have lived next to this property. However, this mess has been going on way before these seven years. On June 18th, 2019, I spoke at the city meeting regarding the disaster mess at this property, and I was the second person to do that. It will be a year at the end of October 2021 since this property was cleaned up, and it was sometime after that that it started getting shown by prospective buyers. On June 8th, 2021, his property was posted by the city declaring it unsafe. I talked to Blaine on June 9th regarding what this meant. On July 14th, I spoke to Blaine by email regarding clarification on the condemnation. He told me that the end of August would be a better timeframe for approximate deadlines, and then it moves forward to the city attorney. So today, my neighbor and I would like clarification on the process with the city attorney." So, why we're frustrated is because we keep, we keep getting told, "Oh, 30 days, 30 days." Well, you can clearly see that this individual gets many opportunities, and he never follows through. His 30 days are up a long time ago. They were probably up 10 years ago when it all started. And right now, with all the stuff going on about people, a little upset about windmills coming in, well, you know what? I'd like to look a mile away and look at a windmill than look what I have to look at for the last seven years. This has been going on for 10-plus years, okay? Drugs, pornography. One time when I talked to somebody, which was Leonard, he told me that, "Well, we like to work with people, Nicole." I said, "Yeah, so do I." I said, "But you know what? Sometimes things come to an end, and his time is up." Well, his time was up a long time ago. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else have any? My mic seems to be dead, too. Anyone else have any concerns? Anyone else from the public have any concerns? Seeing no one else from the public has any concerns, not on the agenda this evening, I'll close the public comments section, and we'll go back to our normal, try to find out where we left off here.
Public safety.
HR.
Oh, HR, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, HR. This is Dominick patiently waiting.
Thank you, President Decker, commissioners. Top of the firing journal, we have the utilities manager. This position's been on hold for some time. Directors Duroff and myself are actually working on the job description right now, and possibly will be having that position open soon, and start looking for replacements. Water reclamation facility has been a position, the operator position's been a difficult one for us to fill. We did make one higher, and we still have one position open, and I believe interviews are this week for that position. We've also lost our senior water reclamation facility operator out at the plant, so we have that position open internally until tomorrow, so interviews will be soon on that as well. Solid waste recycling operator, we did have one declined offer, and then reopened it, and did fill it with another individual. Communication specialist, as we've been telling you recently, has been very difficult for us. We've got two openings, then three openings, and then two openings, so it's been a real tough one. We do have the position open and are, are trying to get applicants for the position right now. Corporal police officer, we did have an opening there internally with the promotions that happened with our lieutenants, so it kind of trickled down, and Casey Broston was promoted to corporal police officer. We have two police officer positions at this time that are open, and we're doing interviews. We had a, several in the background, one is still pending, we had two of them that did not make it through the background. One is pending, and we do have the positions open, they're doing interviews this week for more police officer positions. Recently had an animal control position open up, and that is open, and we are taking applicants on that, applications on that position. And then the seasonal tree data collection position is a seasonal position that we had open last year, and we're waiting for the grant, we have the position open, and they are in the background phase at this point. That's all the positions that I have to report. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mrs. Dominick. Any questions for Mrs. Dominick on the HR report for this month? Now, we'll move on to police department. We have a monthly report. Chief Dossinger?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. I'm before you at the August month report of the Dickinson Police Department. For the month of August, the Dickinson Police Department responded to 2,394 calls for service. We were slightly down from last month, with month of July, we were. We were slightly down from last month. With month of July, we responded 2,720 calls for service. The most prominent calls for service was suspicious persons or vehicles. We responded to 122 calls of those, 114 speak within officer calls, 71 welfare checks, and 65 paper service or warrant services. Parking complaints and thefts and frauds were tied with 44 calls for service. Our top five cited traffic violations include speeding with 28, driving without insurance, 23. We had 10 failed registered motor vehicle, six red light violations, and care required and driving without insurance, the second offense, were tied with five. We had a total of 53 accidents within city limits, two were injury-related, 21 of those were hit and runs, and 30 property accidents. There were a total of 446 traffic stops conducted in the month of August, 99 citations issued, and 279 warnings issued. Warrants, we had 52 warrant arrests. The second highest was drug-related arrests with 18 and 15 criminal trespassing arrests. Behavior health calls remain, we remain very active with behavior health calls. We responded to 95 in the month of August. 71 of those were welfare checks, eight mental health calls, eight intoxicated subject calls on our streets, and we respond to eight suicide-related threats. Training, we concentrated a lot on training in our SRO program. We have a new SRO program. Officer Jenny Ray at the middle school, she went to an SRO basic in the month of August. We also had a school resource officer attend basic negotiations for 40 hours, and a school resource officer advanced training for 40 hours for Sergeant Brandon Stocking. Our criminal investigative division came into the month of August with 52 open cases. They picked up the 35 additional cases for the month. They did presentations to the Trinity School focusing on internet safety, reasonable suspicion, and narcotics. They also assisted patrol division with our back-to-school kickoff, in which we put a uniformed officer in front of every school within our city for the first day of class. They also conducted Ellis presentation to Dickinson public school staff. They did have four callouts, one for a sex offense. They did have two death calls, which they responded to, and one suspicious person call that they responded to. Our SRO program responded to 11 calls in the Dickinson Public Middle School, Grove School, seven at the Dickinson High School, and two at the Alternative School. Our dispatch center answered 939 emergency 911 calls, 5,303 non-emergency calls, and 1,334 out phone calls for the month of August. Our records department did fingerprinting 65 sets for the month. They did register 35 sex offenders. They did present training to two shifts with our neighbors training, and dispatch, or I'm sorry, a record supervisor attended an online uniform primary reporting conference. Our animal shelter responded to 165 calls in the animal patrol division. They did impound a total of 88 animals, 57 dogs, and 32 cats. 31 of the dogs returned to the owner, five cats returned to the owner. So animals remaining at the shelter after the month include six, four dogs, two cats, for a total of six animals. Most prominent, the animal call for service was animals running out large with the 89 for the month. Just kind of officer recognition, we did have five police department officers that had competed in place in the top 20 of the qualified scores for the 2021 Governor's 20 pistol shooting competition held at the North Dakota Peace Officers Association Convention. Those officers were Kylan Klausy, who finished number three, Mike Hansen, who finished number six, Justin Frederick, number seven, Bailey Tullius, number nine, and Casey Brosston had number 19. As HR Shelley Dominick had mentioned, we did have two promotions for the month of August. Casey Brosston was promoted to corporal, and Mike Hansen was promoted to sergeant. Outlining some of the community events for August, our main community event for the month was our National Night Out, which was held on Tuesday, August 3rd, at Direct Center. This is widely attended. The Dickinson Fire Department also participated in that event. It was a very well-attended community event. The other community event, we did have Walmart donate a deep freeze to our program to help us with our Copsicle program, which provides police officers the opportunity to hand out Freezy Pops to our kids and community. That was kind of a quick synopsis, but are there any questions?
Thank you, Chief Dossinger. Any questions for Chief Dossinger on his monthly report?
What's the cost to install that deep freeze in one of the cruisers?
Big battery.
And why aren't they on my block?
Thank you. We will move on to engineering. We have a task order with KLJ for 2020, our 2022 Mill and Overlay, our special improvement district, interim city engineer, Marshick.
President Decker, commissioners, before you is a task order 2104-01576 with KLJ Engineering for the 2022 Mill and Overlay project. Disagreements for professional services consisting of preliminary engineering, design, bidding, and construction administration associated with the project. The intent is to have the project follow a similar process as the last two years, which includes a presentation to commission on potential areas to include, based on need, future work cited for the areas, and our budget. Additionally, we intend to create the special improvement district for assessments pertaining to needed concrete work following similar guidelines as the last two Mill and Overlay projects. The task order is to be billed at an hourly rate, which is not to exceed 175,000. This is a conservative amount based on last year's budget number. City engineering staff recommends approval of the 2022 Mill and Overlay project. Do you have any questions for me on this item? Be happy to answer anything.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshick. Any questions for Mrs. Marshick or city staff on this task order? Any questions? Now I look for a motion on this task order.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Odoman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing nonwill vote. Mr. Odoman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla? Mr. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item up is Public Works. We have a Highlands Engineering Task Order for Westridge, number one addition, road reconstruction. This is city project 202112. Mr. Zeroff?
Thank you, President Decker and commission. This task order is for, to provide design, bidding, and construction engineering services for the street improvements outlined in the preliminary engineering report, which is in your packet. This includes 40th and 44th Avenue West in that area just north of Westridge Drive. Public Works Street Division staff are currently adjusting the protruding manhole sections and temporary filling voids in preparation of the reconstruction with a reinforced concrete pavement plan for next year. Public Works staff recommends approval, and I'll answer any questions as needed.
Thank you, Mr. Zeroff. Any questions for Mr. Zeroff on this task order?
Do you have any rough idea what it's going to cost?
Yes, in the, back, if, looking at the reinforced concrete, we are, I think, right at 615,000 is our estimate to do reinforced concrete on 40th and 44th.
So we would mill that all up for what?
Pardon me?
So then mill the whole road up and?
Uh.
Is that my understanding?
Yeah, there was three or four different options that we're still discussing. Some is, one of them was Mill and Overlay, settle areas with foam injection. One was to recompact the subgrade and reconstruct the roadway. One of the difficulties with reconstructing or recompacting the subgrade, I believe, and Andrew Shrank with Highlands is here, is the depth. The cost of digging, you know, a long ways down versus getting a good base and putting a reinforced concrete on top is very similar. So right now, we're looking at using the reinforced concrete that I have in to recompact all the way up, if that should hold full in that area. And so, right now, the option that we're looking at is a reinforced concrete. That way, too, if there's future small settlement, we're hoping that that'll still float and not have an issue.
Any other questions for Mr. Zeroff?
And the cause of all this, is poor compaction or when it was originally done?
Yes, and maybe I'll ask Andrew, because we did that, Mr. Shrank, because we did a preliminary report study in that area, and he's got a bunch more numbers that I can't remember, so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Zeroff. Andrew Shrank with Highlands Engineering. So we had done an investigation on this site. I don't know that we can state the exact cause. What our investigation consisted of is coring the pavement and running what we call DCP tests on the subgrade. What that does is it determines the bearing capacity of these soils. So those tests can provide an indication of compaction. It doesn't say for sure that that was the issue, but what we did find is we ran these tests up to a depth of six feet at the most, and there were some very low bearing values, which could be indicative of poor compaction. One thing that was interesting, we kind of noticed the surface seemed to have fairly good compaction, and we'd notice it would decrease somewhat incrementally to a depth of about three feet. We'd see a good compaction again, or a little better compaction, and again, it'd start to decrease, which we tend to believe might have been lifts that were over the six-inch thickness that's recommended. Perhaps there was lifts of three feet being put in, compacting to pass your density test. Again, speculation, but those were the types of things we noticed in the DCP testing.
All right. It's unfortunate that we have to rebuild roads that aren't that old.
It definitely is. I would concur with that.
Thank you, Mr. Shrank.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now I look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odoman. Any further questions or comments on task order 210235-02? Hearing nonwill vote. Ms. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Odoman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is planning. Hopefully, everyone, my tablet did update with the update. Mr. Hadley? This would be resolution 28-2021, if I'm correct.
That's correct, Mr. President and commission. This is a final resolution for the replat of Riverfront Estates, which creates Riverfront Estates Third Edition. It's a 16-lot residential subdivision. It was just heard last week by the Planning Commission. They recommended approval, and the staff would recommend approval as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on this resolution?
Let me just add one comment to this. On the top of your resolution, it should read the Riverfront Estates Third Edition. That's what we'll change it to when you approve this resolution. It's correct in the rest of the body. The very first, it's the second line.
Title in the?
Resolution approving final platin titled, then it should say the Riverfront Estates Third Edition.
There's a couple of them in the 2021. Need to be amended.
And we'll, and we'll change all that. That's just, I just want to clarify that that it will be Riverfront Estates Third Edition.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Whinneyham. Any other questions or comments on this resolution? Now I look for a motion.
Second.
Have a motion to approve resolution 28.
Yes.
That, yes. Resolution 28-2021.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla, second by Commissioner Odoman. Any further questions, comments? Hearing nonwill vote. Ms. Walla? Mr. Odoman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
That should be it for agenda items. Down to item 10. Commissioners, do you have any items that weren't on the agenda this evening that you'd wish to discuss?
Mr. Zeroff or Mr. Whinneyham? Update on City Hall project? Yeah, I'd probably do a poor job at it, so I'll let Mr. Zeroff. If you don't do well, I'll figure it out.
No, I would appreciate any help with that, but.
No, you just had a meeting on Tuesday, so, earlier today, so I think.
We did have a, we did have a meeting earlier today. Progress is going well on it. The upstairs casing is done. They're just waiting on windows. There's another office upstairs that, there's some ceiling tile that needs to be done, some more fire sprinkling system that needs to be finished upstairs, but mostly in the commission room. All of the sheet rocking, or the sheet rocking is getting done. Most of it is done in the entryway where the different windows will be for the, like, utility bailing, engineering assessing, and court. The painting is done in most of those rooms, and the carpet is being laid. The commission room, they, they have to finish the sprinkler system. They're finishing sheet rocking, which is really kind of tying it together now in the commission room. There's still a lot of work. The commission room is probably the area that'll be done the latest. Upstairs, I think we're going to try to get windows in and occupy probably in a couple weeks on, for some of the offices upstairs to get that done. Some of the molding and the doors are still out, as far as not, contractor hasn't received them yet. The wood doors in the commission room are going to probably be the longest lead time. We're still waiting on those. The ceiling for the commission room did arrive, and some other things have arrived, but it's looking good. Once the sheet rock is done in the entryway and the tiling gets done, that'll really make it look good, you know, as you, as you enter that area. So it's coming together. Most of the mechanical is finishing up. All the big steel work downstairs is pretty much done. Waiting on some more generator and a couple of the things yet for the project. It's coming together. The, some of the material, lead time has really been stretched out, especially some of the wood doors and some aluminum frames.
Thanks, Mr. Zeroff.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Zeroff. That, well done.
Please add onto that.
And, Mr. Frederick, internally to the city, we had a planning time for 15 October. That was also some of the timeline for the completion of the upstairs. It was really for the majority, if you remember it back in the bids, the majority of the work you completed on the inside by 15 October. That's in the target timeline, based on what Mr. Zeroff talked about with some of the materials. But we're close on the city staff. It's, internally, there's some operational considerations that we still haven't got worked out. We're essentially having weekly meetings to look at movement windows to get staff over. So there may be a period of time where we have split base. We'll have some staff over in that building. IT will be first, and then we've kind of worked through IT-moving sections of the departments. But we want to ensure we notify the public if there's going to be any disruptions of their entry points, meaning those that come to utility and those that want to. wanna submit applications. So that's all still working, and it was really based on whether we got the green light or occupancy, and that'll have to be internal to the city also, if our building official can go over and make sure safety of use is correct, because we have, and some of this is detailed, but essentially that entire building, the three buildings are all won on the fire suppression system. So once that's approved and once we have safe to move, then we'll start on the first week of October, start putting staff that doesn't generally work with the public in the building upstairs. And then we'll come up with a briefing to the commission that talks about our operations plans if, once we actually close out this building. And that is looking like December for the commission, and that leads to me having to go in and talk to American Bank and also renegotiate our current lease. I don't project them to evict us, but I wanna make sure that our lease is still ongoing. Subject, your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, anything that wasn't on the agenda you wish to bring up, commission? Now I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.